Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 25th City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call of the members. Counselor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Genino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guirino Swaya.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Coram's President. Approval of the Journal of the meeting of March 11th.
So moved.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number three. Hearing called as ordered by the City Council.
Madam Clerk, permission, I'd like to suspend the rules. All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
I would like to take up the zoning Subcommittee Report, the appointment Subcommittee Report, and both communications first before we get into the public hearings.
First up is the zoning Subcommittee Report.
Thank you. I was waiting for the President to call me. The zoning Subcommittee met this evening on item 24081, 35 Francis Street, Revere, Mass. We voted out favorably with conditions. I'd ask the clerk to read them.
On the conditions that were discussed in the zoning Subcommittee, the first was that each unit shall be limited to one resident parking pass and one visitor pass per unit. And the other was the condition submitted by Frank Strinji for a complete Chapter 34 review. Shall the City Council grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guirino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Next up is the appointment Subcommittee Report.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had about six to seven appointees, and we had one no-show. And we voted everyone that came up here in person favorably, and we tabled Paul Barasso. So he's Assistant Harbor Master. And we could take them up together.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairwoman McKenna? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guirino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Congratulations, everybody.
Communication from the Water and Sewer Assistant Superintendent, Chris Charamella, relative to an ordinance amending street and sidewalk opening permits during the winter months.
Anyone here to speak on the communication? Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Clarence Zarillo, 281 Broadway. I briefly spoke to Chris this morning. If you have any questions you have in advance of the public hearing, him and I would both love to take them, but he's prepared to come in person for the public hearing to hear all your questions and concerns.
Thank you. Any counselors? This is going to be ordered to a public hearing on April 29th.
Calendar item number 21. Communication from the City Auditor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for the Revere History Museum.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. Tom Skrowski, 281 Broadway. This is an item to support the continued work at the Revere History Museum. It's to pay for materials for electric and HVAC upgrades. You know, it's really just a small fraction of the total cost of the improvements that have been made at the History Museum over the last two years. We're really grateful for the support of the VOC, who's been providing labor on this project in kind, which, you know, without their support, this would have been hundreds of thousands of dollars. But instead, this evening, we're just asking for $50,000 to complete the work in this school year, so the museum will be ready to open to the public again at the conclusion of the school year.
Thank you, sir. Any counselors? Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is a great use of the funds, the CIT funds. The Revere History Museum has been in existence, I believe, since 1986 or so. And the last few years, we've pumped a lot of effort and energy into the building. And I'm glad to see that we are continuing our efforts by supplying the funds in order to keep the progress going, to bring this up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Tom, thank you for coming up tonight. I agree with Counselor Novoselsky and Tom's assessment of the project. If it wasn't for the VOC and School Committee and Cogliandro, we would be in a lot more, we would be looking at a lot more money. And because of their free labor and work and kids learning on the job training, we've got out cheap, so I think $50,000 is an easy ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
I'm in full support of this. As superintendent, my last year, I was working hand in hand with the Community Development Office, working with the vocational school during the renovations to the History Museum. And it's coming along beautifully, and I think this is a great use of money.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that it's nice to have, you know, a landmark that was saved, because all our landmarks pretty much are gone in the city. So this is a really great place. I don't know if anybody's, I'm sure there's been a number of people that have visited the museum, the historical museum, but it's just so nice to have it preserved. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to the Board One Capital Improvements Account in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of performing upgrades at the Revere History Museum? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guirino Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
And back to the normal order of business. Before we begin, the council was handed these devices. I just want to assure that where we're, how we're supposed to set these, because I haven't heard anything just yet.
Yeah, so the devices that you all have are all preset to Channel 1, so you'll be hearing English in your ear. You can, you don't have to wear it until someone comes up who's speaking Spanish. So feel free to take it off until that point, in which then you'll be able to get simultaneous interpretation into English.
Thank you very much.
Onto public hearings. Calendar item number three. Hearing called as ordered by the City Council on an ordinance amending the revised zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to home-based childcare.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening once again. Tom Skrowski, 281 Broadway. I'll be brief tonight, and I want to thank the council for reviving this motion to revise, to amend our zoning ordinance to allow for improved home-based childcare access for Revere businesses and families. This was something that we talked about about a year ago, in April of last year. I'm going to spare you all another detailed presentation like I gave at that point. But if you do want to see it, it's available on Facebook and Revere TV. There was a City Council meeting, April 24th, and a Planning Board meeting, April 25th. It was riveting television, if you care to see the reruns. But in short, what we're proposing is to remove the special permit requirement for home-based daycare, to allow it by right in a series of neighborhoods throughout the city, and to limit the number of children that can be within a home-based childcare from four, which is the current limit, to 10, which is the ceiling set by the EEC. So basically aligning with the state regulations as it pertains to the number of children that can be in a home-based daycare setting. A few changes since we did present in April. Number one, at the time, we were proposing to remove a prohibition to have pools at daycare sites. That has been rescinded. So in effect, the same ordinance language with regard to pools that is there today will remain, which is to say that if you're operating a home-based daycare site in the city, you are not allowed to have a pool. There are a few providers today that have pools already, but they'll be allowed essentially grandfathered in, so they'll be allowed to continue to have daycare operations at their site, even though they have a pool. And then the other major change is, at the time, we proposed lifting the limit from four to 10, which is still the case in effect, but we changed the language, so it's, instead of 10, it is the limit set by the EEC. So in effect, that becomes a dynamic number. If, for whatever reason, the EEC raises the limit from 10, the city would just move along with the state regulations. So, you know, in summary, this is really good regulation. It supports small business that provides critical care to Revere families. It increases the supply of childcare at a time where childcare costs in Massachusetts are among the highest in the country. And it implements a key recommendation from our Workforce Development Plan. And I know there are a lot of people here in support of this ordinance, and similarly, they spoke to the council in April. And I'm going to try to spare you and them from coming up to speak again, if I could just ask. Of course, anyone who would like to speak can always come up and speak in a public hearing, but if anyone would choose instead to show their support by just raising their hand, to show that they're in support of these changes to make daycare more open and accessible, please raise your hand. Okay, great. So we've got some full-fledged support here. I appreciate you all, as a council, bringing this to the forefront. I appreciate everyone here tonight showing their support for this important work, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
May I ask, we're also, just to be sure, we are not requiring a special permit through the City Council to obtain daycare?
That's correct. It would be allowed by right.
I just wanted to verify. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
This is a public hearing, and as you just heard, oh, yeah, I guess you can start clapping now, sure. The council is very much in support of this, and, you know, I would like to limit the amount of speaking tonight. If you're here on behalf of a group, maybe send one representative up, but we are going to take proponents, that is, people in favor. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. A private citizen of Low, 70 Low Street, Revere, Massachusetts, Mr. President. I'm actually going to speak in Spanish, for the comfort of the folks who have been advocating this for a few years, given that this is their win. Voy a hablar en español, para la comodidad de las personas que vienen luchando por esta propuesta ya por varios años, porque esta es una propuesta que ustedes han ganado con su esfuerzo, con su esmero, y con su trabajo, o sea que los y las felicito. Un aplauso para ustedes.[897.23][897.23](applause) Señor presidente y integrantes del Consejo Municipal de Riviera, mi nombre es Juan Pablo Jaramillo, como les había comentado, una persona residente privada de la comunidad en este momento. Esta propuesta no solo ayuda a nuestros trabajadores aquí en la ciudad de Riviera, sino que ayuda a todos nuestros padres, que cada día les toca levantarse temprano y salir a trabajar, asegurando de que tengan acceso a un cuidado infantil y educación infantil de calidad, que es la que proveen estas proveedoras y educadoras en sus casas. Estamos expandiendo por esta opción de expandir este programa y estas licencias. En verdad es algo que aplaudo y espero que el consejo pueda adoptarlo, porque es un reconocimiento de los costos tan terribles que están teniendo las personas trabajadoras, y un reconocimiento del trabajo y la educación tan ardua que hacen estas educadoras. Con eso, los instuo a todos los concejales aquí presentes de que acompañen con un voto afirmativo para esta propuesta. Muchas gracias, señor presidente.
Anyone else love this? I love this.
I love it.
This is, this is great. If there's anybody who really feels like they need to say something that has not been said already, I would encourage you to come up and speak on behalf as a proponent. Seeing and, ah, going once, twice, come on up. Name and address for the record, ma'am.
I'm Olga Takure. I live in Glendale Street, Revere, Massachusetts. I'm the Executive Director of Women in Courage and Empowerment, a nonprofit organization based here in Riviera, who has been working with the childcare providers for the past year or so, providing trainings and support and work towards this initiative. But I'm not only here to talk in favor of this ordinance, but also in favor that this will benefit many, many families who come to our organization looking for assistance because they have to stay at home and they can't afford childcare and go work. So I ask you, and I applaud you for this effort, and it seems like everybody's in support, and I just wanted to take, to thank you all, and waiting for the vote in favor. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.[1061.48][1061.48](applause) At this time, I would like to open the floor for opponents. Anybody not in favor? Good. Seeing and hearing none? Close that, close that.[1075.73][1075.73](applause) Any counselors? Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be short and sweet. We've talked enough about this over the past year. This is a huge victory for the city, and I'm just proud to be part of it and proud to make this happen for the people of the City of Riviera. It's much needed, and congratulations.[1099.01][1099.01](applause)
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Well, I'm sorry. I got excited, just like you guys. This is going to be referred to the zoning Subcommittee on April 8th.
Mr. President, if I might, just for a second.
Counselor Zambudo.
We streamlined this public hearing so that this is going to not get tied up in committee like it did last year, because there were too many unknowns. So everything's been taken care of. This is going to go very quickly, and it's going to be very smooth. But by law, it has to go to committee, and that's what's happening here tonight. Thank you.[1141.08][1141.08](applause)
Thank you. Refer to zoning, April 8th. Thank you, everybody.
Calendar item number four. Hearing called as ordered by the City Council on an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Riviera relative to the term of the Superintendent of Public Works.
Is anyone here to speak? Ma'am, name and address for the record, please.
Clarence Zarillo, 281 Broadway Solicitor's Office. I'm here as a proponent for this. When the new mayor was elected, we kind of always do an audit of our existing ordinances, which the City Clerk's office is always doing year-round, but I pay special attention to when we have new folks going in. And we took a look at who our appointed department heads are, as well as appointed cabinet positions, which are slightly different. And we took a look at how long each of those folks are serving for. We know that some of those positions, such as your city clerk that you have here, as well as the city engineer, the treasurer, the purchasing agent, some of those are at-will appointments, or they have life tenure due to special acts that have been passed. But outside of those few, most of the mayoral appointments, such as your assessor, your auditor, building commissioner, and election commissioner, those are between three and four. Some of them are coterminous, so they align exactly with the mayor's term. One of those is here. We have Mike Wells. An ISD appointment is coterminous. The election appointment is coterminous. But for the majority, most of them are three to four. And so we decided to streamline all of those mayoral appointments and department heads, and keep them within the three to four range. I can tell you that the Department of Public Works Superintendent used to be a two-year appointment. That was changed in 1982. The council approved a change from two to five. And so we kind of just want to streamline, bring everybody back under one wing of the same mayoral term. No appointment is going to be outliving the mayor, in theory, so that's why we're trying to keep things three to four. The only necessity for a four, as you know, is the elections commissioner, who has to co-align with the elections that we vote in, and then we have ISD as well. But I'm happy to take any questions. But this is really just a housekeeping change that we wanted to kind of bring everybody under the same umbrella, have everybody serving similar term lengths.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other proponents, people in favor? Seeing and hearing none? We will open the floor for opponents. Anybody not in favor? Seeing and hearing none? Any city counselors wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none? I believe this will be referred to Legislative Affairs on April 29th.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called as ordered by the City Council on an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Riviera relative to food truck regulations.
We're going to open the public hearing with proponents. Are there people in favor of the food truck ordinances? Anyone in favor? Name and address for the record.
Stephanie DeSisto, 7 Reservoir Avenue. Appreciate the time to be able to share with you my experiences and my input as to why I'm in support of this narrow-focused amendment to the food truck ordinance. If I could just share with you, because it is important to share.[1377.92][1377.92](noise) That was 15 seconds of food truck noise. Put yourself into my shoes, where I'm subjected to that for up to nine hours a day, six days a week, with the exception of the occasional time when the big food truck parks a little further down in front of the Legion. And I don't want you to feel sorry for me. I'm not here to get you to feel sorry for me. But what I think as a community collectively, we should all feel sorry and saddened about, is the fact that a senior citizen who's been here for 64 years is going to come up and fight to hold on to what little is left of her quality of life, and that I have to come up here and petition the council to restore back to me that which has been taken, which is my quality of life. And there is no quality of life when you're subjected to that kind of noise for that length of time. It's sustained noise. It never stops. And you can certainly not put a price tag on quality of life, and you certainly should never weigh it up against dollars and cents. I'm not just here for me, myself, and I. I'm concerned about, yes, what I have to deal with, but I'm also concerned with the people on Chiva Street who are dealing with the same thing. The people who live in 250 Broadway, whose units are on the street, who have to deal with the same thing. And I'm also concerned about our brick-and-mortar businesses who are impacted by the presence of food trucks. And I realize, believe me, I realize that our neighborhood abuts a central business district. We were here long before it ever was rezoned to CB, and we've heard all of the rather insensitive and dismissive taglines about, well, you live next to the CB, so just get used to it and deal with it. Now, it isn't just about the noise either. It's about parking, and traffic, and public safety concerns because of the parking issues and the traffic issues. This area, City Hall, was already overburdened with traffic issues. We have people double parking all the time. We have people blocking the intersection of Reservoir Ave partly as they jump out of their cars. We have people who actually park their vehicles and get out in the travel lanes on Reservoir Ave. It is, it was overburdened to begin with, but now with the presence of food trucks, it's put it over the top. There are currently four spaces that have been taken up by food trucks. And there's a potential to have nine spaces in front of this whole area from Pleasant Street to Chiva Street, nine spaces, because food trucks can be 44 feet long. That's two and a half, so you might as well count three, and there's three spots, that's nine parking spaces. That takes up the entire strip in front of the Legion, maybe with the exception of one. And the parking out here, 15-minute zone for people coming in to do City Hall business, that's two spaces there that are gone. Broadway, City Hall was just never a make-sense area to have food trucks. I wanted to also talk about the traffic now. The traffic, I've been experienced it myself, coming up Broadway in the evening when the pickup truck for the small food cart is trying to back into the space to hitch up the trailer. The traffic is backing up almost to the light. People are swinging around into oncoming traffic because they don't want to wait for all that to happen. And also, a public safety concern is, because there's not enough parking sometimes, the big food truck has got the back of their truck extended out into the no-parking area up to Hyde Street. So it forces people, and I've been in it on three occasions, coming up Hyde to turn northbound onto Broadway. I have to pull out into the center yellow line, into oncoming traffic. That is, that is, that is not a good situation. It's an accident waiting to happen. So it's public safety, too. I saw a pedestrian step out in front of the, behind the big food truck two weeks ago on a Friday night. He almost got hit by a car, because they can't see over the truck or around the truck, and he can't, he couldn't see what's coming on the other side, too. So those are those several points. I do want to just point out the fact that we had heard that somehow removing Broadway from the food truck license ordinance is somehow going to financially devastate people. And this doesn't, this doesn't prevent the food truck operators, any food truck operator, from going to any of the other multiple locations in the city to set up shop. And to me, I would think they would be making more money outside of a train station than they would ever get up here on Broadway. And so there's that. And then there's the Elote folks. They have two successful restaurants, you heard that, and they have other food trucks. And the big food truck people, yes, they did close their restaurant, but they sold the property 15 months ago and almost got $1 million for it. So I don't, I can't quite understand the narrative to say that by just making this simple change is going to cause these people financial devastation, take away livelihoods, put people on the unemployment lines. It just doesn't square for me, and that's my input, and.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Thank you for your comments and for coming tonight. Any other proponents? Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Juan David Jaramillo.[1780.42][1780.42](laugh) Just want to make it clear, because there's my, my good friend Juan Pablo Jaramillo. Everybody confuses sometimes. So I'm actually here as a business advocate for the food trucks. And we all think, in our group... And we all think, in our group, that it's a little unfair to have the food trucks park across the street of a restaurant, mostly three spots right across the street from two restaurants, specifically Rincon Lomeno and De Parma Restaurant. Another business are being affected, as I'm talking about Papa Jack's, Good Diner, Riviera House of Pizza, Costa del Sol, the Chinese restaurant as well, and also Valeri, as well as Morris Tavern. We all concerned about this. Also, in Shirlav, these other restaurants who are affected because of the food trucks, and Shirlav is only one spot for it. I actually was in total favor of the food trucks at the beginning, when they started, because it was just a little trailer selling corn. And I, myself, as a business owner, I signed a paper to the Health Commissioner saying that they are allowed to use my bathroom, because they didn't have a bathroom to start and to do the business. So they needed a bathroom for the employees. I said, "They are free to use it," because I'm a business advocate. So the problem is now, I have three trucks, and specifically one truck parked there every single day, which I think it loses the meaning of being a mobile restaurant, because they are there every day, Monday to Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So I don't think that's fair with us. We have, we're going to talk personally about our business. We have 37 employees, of which 16 are there for lunch. My lunch business is being really affected by every day having the food truck there, because, of course, people is going to go and buy something cheaper, easier. And again, I'm not against to the food trucks, but it's affecting our business dramatically. So I'm going to be forward, pretty much to close for lunch, as other restaurants did, like Valeri, and I'm going to point a few more if you want. So, and it's another point that we see there, it's not only about the business, it's about the parking. So they're taking our parking spots, and besides that, we have the harassment, because we don't call it another way, the harassment from the parking guys, the tickets. We're getting tickets all over, everywhere. Our customers don't want to come back, because not even get off the car and get a ticket immediately. So besides that, we have the food trucks, and come on, three food trucks, that's too much. Second, we actually researched, and we noticed that in Boston, they do the rotations for the food trucks. And honestly, if you guys are going to allow to have food trucks here, they should have some kind of rotation, so they cannot be stationary every day in the same spot. And the third one is the noise, because we also hear the noise the lady was expressing before, from these three food trucks with three generators going all day. That's no fun. And the last part of it is, based on the regulations that were proposed at the beginning from the city, is the trucks can be parked 400 feet, and I'm sorry, I need to correct that, 200 or 500 feet from any restaurant?
250.
250? 250 to 300 feet from any restaurant who sells the same food or similar food. So I have a Spanish restaurant, they sell Spanish food, and they are right across. Right now, they are right there, and it's two. So I think it's a little bit too much for our businesses. I invested a lot of money in that restaurant, believe it or not. When China Roma was there, we invested a huge amount of money to have the place, whatever it is right now, which is spotless and clean. And to have this is a little bit, it's like, not a little bit, it's a lot. It's a lot for us. And I'm talking not only for me, I'm talking about 30 businesses in the area. We are all in a group. We got together, we spoke about it, and that's what I am here.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Are there any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anthony Cantino. I live at 240 Suffolk Avenue, Revere, Massachusetts. I'm a little confused here. What are we talking about? Allowing food trucks to be on Broadway, stationary for hours? Is that what we're talking about here?
Yes.
I mean, that falls under the Health Department. They get special permits to work. The Health Department gives you a special permit when there's an occasion, that there's a crowd, that the restaurants can't handle it, so they give the legency to allow vendors to operate in that particular area so that the crowd is served. Now, I've been in the business for almost 50 years. I've never heard of a stationary food truck in front of a business. I know about canteen trucks. They operate from place to place. Mechanics are busy working, so the canteen truck goes there, drops his drap or whatever it is, and serves them coffee if they want coffee. He opens up the thing if they want a sandwich, or they want this, or they want that, and he leaves. He doesn't stay there all day long, five or six hours. I've never heard of such a thing, and I've been in the business for almost 50 years. You are allowed to work in the city, but you've got to move. You cannot stay there. You've got to move. The state gives you 20 minutes, and you have to move, unless you have a special permit from the Health Department, because there's an event being held, and they allow X amount of, as many trucks, and they pay to come there. They don't get there for nothing. They pay. They pay a fee. I know. Because when they have the fireworks in Lynn, Massachusetts, I can't even stay in Swampscott because I can see the fire, and stay there à la Oomphah for nothing. You've got to pay also, so that you can contribute something to the event. I've never heard of a food truck being stationed at a particular place in front of businesses while paying taxes, so forth and so on.
Thank you very much, sir.
What are we talking about here?
Thank you.
It has to go through the Health Department.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Any other proponents? People in favor? Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jessica Torres. I live at 250 Broadway, and I'm right across the street from the trucks. I hear those trucks all day long. I'm sitting there cleaning, cooking, watching, to be hearing the trucks. Spring is coming, we're going to open our windows, we're going to hear these trucks. That's when I'm, you know, and hogging up parking spaces. Yeah, people can't see kids going around a truck, trying to cross the street, and stuff like that. I mean, is this ridiculous? And, you know, it's driving me crazy. It's really driving me crazy, hearing trucks all day long.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Any other proponents? Step on up. Name and address for the record, sir.
Richard DeFranzo, 250 Broadway, apartment 204, directly across the street. Now, with the windows closed, I still hear it. It's ridiculous. You hear it 9 o'clock in the morning, you see all the 18-wheelers pulling up, unloading. That's noise. I hear it constantly from 6 o'clock on, and it's getting ridiculous. Now, people are eating in cars, blaring their radios. Live right there. Been there for 11 years now. I've seen stuff that, if I was ever caught without, you know, just to give tickets, I'd make the city a million, seeing all the illegal stuff done. People are parking, eating there, leaving their trash out in the street. It's ridiculous how this is being allowed. Really is. And then I can't even watch television. I can't wait to open the window and see how it's going to be. It's going to be a nightmare. I mean, something's going to be done. I mean, come on, you're just losing control of Broadway in my eyes. Serious, and he's just allowing anything in the city. Just, you know, it's not right. I mean, we deserve quality life, and I don't think we're getting it right now. We're putting up with this from 9 till 8, or whatever they do, and then wake up the next morning, go out, and I see trash left everywhere. It's ridiculous. It really is. He's got to take control, and he's got to do something, because it's not, there's going to be a lot of upset people, and there's going to be a lot of change around here, Charlie, years ago. So, I mean, it's just a shame. There's plenty of places down the boulevard where they'd be able to park, wouldn't disturb anybody, wouldn't bother no restaurants. They'd have places to park, and then the state would patrol it, and we'd be able to live nice around here. You know what it's like to live in my apartment right now when I try to watch television? I can't. My old's feeling twice, two times with cancer so far, but that's besides the point. I'm still going. I'm trying to live a life in an apartment that I can't, because the windows are dead locked right now, and I get them closed because the noise and the weather, of course. But when springtime comes, you think I want to listen to that? That if I put my television up to maybe 75%, I can still barely hear it? It's ridiculous. I just think there needs to be something done about it. They need a different location, plain and simple. I mean, their cars in traffic jams, they park everywhere, they're using the places of the general, it's ridiculous. It really is. Come in the morning and see the trash. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
I live at 70th Street. I don't know, I thought I was opposed to the food trucks, so I don't know, I was a little mixed up there. So I'm going to read what I wrote down. The food trucks, they use the noisy generators, which run for hours. They take up the median parking spots. And I'm sure they're impacting the businesses that are established, the brick-and-mortar ones. When the trucks are parked near the corners, they obstruct the view. I have a hard time driving out into traffic, trying to see oncoming cars. And also, their customers, unfortunately, park at hydrants. They obstruct the street traffic. They park in front of driveways, and mine. We are seeking relief from these issues, and I believe the sections of Revere Beach, where there are no businesses, would be a good option. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Any people not in favor? Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Ropas, 7 Chiva Street, Revere. My objection is, when they first came here, it was only for special events, food trucks. Now all of a sudden...
So, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. You sound like you're a proponent, because we're trying to make...
No, opposing.
Yes, you're in favor of the changes that will, it seems like, benefit the residents of the area. So you're in favor of the changes?
Yes.
I'm not going to lie to you publicly, or privately for that matter, but you're a proponent. I just wanted to clear, because we have to put it down on the record, so...
Okay, but still, the food trucks were only supposed to hear when they had, like, special events for kids and whatever's going on. I never knew they were supposed to be here every day of the week, and then cause traffic and blocking people's getting in and out on the corners of the street. It's like they don't care, so...
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to continue with opponents. Anyone not in favor of the changes? Seeing and hearing none. We'll close that side of the hearing. Any city councilors? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had a meeting about the food trucks. There was about 40 people there, maybe a week and a half ago. But the licenses that were given out to these food trucks are not in front of Broadway. One is 4 Freeman Street. Another license was 319 Charger Street. Another one was in front of the Lincoln School, and another one was in front of the Beauchamp School. So, and none of these food trucks are in the addresses that they were given. So the one down at Beauchamp School, it's in Beauchamp Square. It's a nightmare, because when it's 5 o'clock in, you know, PM, and people are coming home from work, they have to go around, he's taking up a lane. So, and these other three are supposed to be where they're supposed to be. That's where the License Commission gave them the addresses to go to, and they're in front of Broadway. My idea, because I go to Florida, they have food truck parks. And there's a couple of options. One was Central Park Parking Lot, which I don't think is a good place to put them, because you still have to run a generator, and there's all these neighbors around them. One of the ideas that I had is Immaculate Conception Parking Lot, because of the fact that Immaculate Conception is really in need of money. They don't have to use a generator. They can take wires and hook them up to the food trucks, so there's no generators allowed. You can give, you can pay, they can pay for the electricity bill for Immaculate Conception and help them in any way. And three parts of that parking lot is commercial. You have the youth center across the street, you have the Immaculate Conception, which it might disturb the kids from learning, and you also have the library. So, and you have Mr. Kingston across the street. So you have, you know, three parts of that parking lot, if you park it up closer to Beach Street, would not hurt any of the neighbors, and it would allow no generators or gas that fills the, because it's pollution, too. Those generators cause pollution. So the people that are dealing with the noise are also dealing with the pollution, too. So I think this is, you know, this should be revisited. I know it's going into subcommittee, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was the maker of this motion, and it was to remove the spots from in front of City Hall and the Legion, and I'm still in favor of that. Given the high concentration of brick-and-mortar restaurants on Broadway, the food trucks, I don't think adds anything to what is already here. I think we need to give them the ability to do business. I know a lot of them are struggling on Broadway. I'm in favor of food trucks in the proper place. They could be moved. We could talk about alternative locations. The noise has been brought up by a lot of the residents, the generators running constantly. I, myself, pulling out of Hyde Street, you can't see to come out into traffic. So I don't think those locations were in the spirit of the food truck ordinance. So I'm still in favor of removing them from those spots. Can we come up with alternative locations? I'm sure we can. But I would urge everyone, if we could, once it goes to subcommittee, that we give the relief to the business owners and the residents, and remove them from those two locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino, so what?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with my colleague. I have to agree with the brick-and-mortar restaurants, with the business owners. This is going to be, it's very inconvenient for them. They're losing business, because especially when you're having the same type of food directly across the street from you. So I feel for them. I also feel for the residents. The residents are the ones who are suffering, especially with that noise that we just heard, that that woman had the recording of. If that's from her room, from her apartment, what is it going to be like in the summer once they do open their windows? And as far as the parking, I actually had that issue today. I was trying to pull out of a parking spot, and I could not see the cars coming. It was a near miss. Counselor McKenna had a great point at putting them in the Immaculate Conception Church Parking Lot. That would be amazing. But how about putting them where the parks are in the city? So you know there's going to be people, like during the summer, they can go to a park area and maybe get that type of business. And also, if the licenses were not given for Broadway, why are they allowed to even be there? That's my other problem. They should be where they got their license to be at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the first meeting we had, where we spoke about this, we saw a woman who was visibly upset, an owner of a food truck, and that was tough to hear her struggles. visibly upset, an owner of a food truck, and that was tough to hear her struggles if she would lose that. Tonight, we heard the resident struggles, and I think Richard, was it at two fifty Broadway, saying he has to put his TV up to seventy-five or seventy-five percent, and he's still not hearing it, and the other woman who took a video of the sound. And I agree with Counselor McKenna and my fellow counselors that maybe we can find a designated area, like Counselor Sowaya said, maybe each school. Maybe we can rotate them out of the beach. I always say the Sandcastle event, it's incredible when all the food trucks are lined up down the beach, and you can walk down the middle of the street, and, you know, you feel safe. You have your kids there, and that's a great event because you feel so safe. You can walk down the middle of the street and stop at all the food trucks. Kelly's has a food truck. There are so many great food trucks down there, and it brings a sense of community. And so, I hope we can work together to come up with a better location that doesn't affect the residents like it has at two fifty Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. By no means am I against food trucks and their place, but, you know, we have people like Juan Geromelo, who opens a restaurant, invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in what was a disaster of a restaurant at the end of its life. I don't want to criticize an institution, but at the end of that life of that restaurant, it was a disaster. And we ask these people to invest in our city and invest these hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then they got to have a food truck with similar food across from their restaurant, and they can't survive. That's not what the food trucks were designed for. I like them on the beach like everybody does. I like them moving around. I certainly don't like them on Broadway. So, I'm certainly in favor of restricting Broadway and let the businesses survive and let the neighbors have a peaceful life. I feel so bad for Stephanie DeSisto. She goes back many years here with me because I've been here for many years. We've been on some sides of issues and on other sides, but to live like that after all these years is not fear to them. And so, I'm on the side of moving the trucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a tough situation. I think Counselor Haas was correct. In one side, we have residents and businesses, and on the other side, we have small business owners, and it's an us versus them right now. And I don't think that's the way it should be. I don't think they was designed like that for the purpose of being parked in one simple space. I think maybe we come up with an ordinance that mandates them to change locations on a daily basis. They can't be in the same location twice. We give them areas they can go, but I do think that neighbors and whatnot may have to put up with a day on Broadway. I just think that telling a small business owner who went out and invested their life savings into a truck, you're no longer able to use it in the city, would be very tough on any one of us, and I'm not aiming it against anyone, but it's a tough situation to be in. So, I think it's up to us to come up with an idea, and I think moving them throughout the city on a scheduled basis is a good start. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor Janino?
I'm all for the food trucks. I'm not against them at all. However, I do believe there's a mobile operation. They should be mobile. They should be moving around and doing business throughout the city. I mean, there's plenty of locations in the city that could work, same as a canteen truck or anything else. So, I'm all for it, but I think, again, it should be mobile.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Seeing and hearing none, this will be referred to Legislative Affairs on April twenty-ninth.
Council item number six. Hearing called as ordered on the application of SDR nine owner LLC, one Beacon Street, Boston, Mass., requesting a chapter one forty-eight license from the Revere City Council for above-ground storage of two hundred and seventy gallons of diesel fuel and a generator and two thousand five hundred and six gallons of gasoline contained within one hundred and seventy-nine vehicles to be parked in a parking garage in a mixed-use development at fifty Salt Street.
This is a public hearing. Open the floor to proponents. Any proponents? Good evening, ma'am. Name an address for the record, please.
Excuse me, Abigail Middleton, on behalf of SDR nine owner LLC, fifty Salt Street. So, this is a permit to open, to allow us to have vehicles in the garage and fuel for generator at Amaya, the future, the first building at Suffolk Downs. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? People in favor?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Can you repeat that? I'm having a hard time hearing.
Sure. This is the fuel storage permit to allow us to have vehicles in the garage at Amaya, the first building at Suffolk Downs, as well as generator, fuel and a generator for the emergency backup generator.
People in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Any opponents? People not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Any city councilors? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Shall the City Council grant the chapter one forty-eight license for above-ground storage of flammables, parking garage, and generator at fifty Salt Street in accordance with the plan on file? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Harramio?
No.
No. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The chapter one forty-eight license has been granted. Council item number seven. Hearing called as ordered on the application of Overlook Ridge LLC, Caraveris Residential, Harborside Three, two ten Hudson Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, relative to a zoning ordinance further amending the Overlook Ridge overlay district.
This is a public hearing. We'll open it first to proponents. Name an address for the record, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Marshall Teicher, Veris Residential, two ten Hudson Street, Jersey City, New Jersey.
One moment, just grabbing the HDMI cable for you.
What do I press? Do I have to work something?
Press the space bar to go from one...
Press what? If I can plug this in. It's all turned around. I think I know how to use this. All right, there we go. What do I press?
Two-second delay. There we go. So, just press the... Oh, shoot. Hold on. So, just press the space bar, the space bar, to go to the next one.
Sorry, I'm not technically adept. Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a matter that we spoke about...
I'm so sorry, sir. Just for the record, could you just state your name and address?
Sure. Marshall Teicher, two ten Hudson Street, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate being heard tonight. This is a subject that was brought up last year, and we got a lot of input regarding things we discussed and presented. Hopefully, we'll be responsive tonight to a number of those topics and try to reduce the discussion as much as we can. For those not familiar with the site, this is the last two sites in Overlook Ridge in the Revere part of the development. Lot one at the bottom, as you can see, and lot fifteen at the top. I'm going to go to the site plan if I press the right button. So far, that's not working. My grandkids do this for me at home. Okay, there we go. Space bar. Oh, thank you. Which is the space bar? What does that mean?
Either do space bar or this one. Yeah, there we go.
Thank you. Left, back, right, forward. Thank you. Okay, so, lot one is the piece at the bottom of the page, right at Salem Street, and this is a site that we discussed in the past that was originally envisioned for retail or hotel. The large conversation we had regarding this property was the hotel use. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, we have a condition, we must build a hotel, and we can have accessory use of retail. The amendment we're seeking tonight is to remove the hotel as a condition. We'd like to build retail here. We think the Overlook Ridge with what will be probably four thousand residents has no neighborhood service retail, so they can't buy a loaf of bread or milk other than ordering it on Amazon, and this is our opportunity to build retail. We don't think a hotel is viable, but more importantly, retail is actually needed here. So, we buy the ordinance. As it's written, we can fit ten thousand feet plus or minus of retail and park it pursuant to code, and while we're not talking about the site plan itself, what we're talking about tonight is the ability to eliminate the hotel requirement and be able to build retail on this lot. We're not removing a hotel as part of the zoning ordinance. We just don't intend to build it. We'd like to build a retail that's also allowed. The second site, parcel fifteen, at the top of the page, is the last residential site in Revere for Overlook Ridge. This site right now is also subject to the hotel condition. You cannot start the residential unless a hotel is built on lot one. Since we don't want to build a hotel and recommend that, request that we can build a retail and remove the condition of the hotel. Similarly, in the ordinance, there's a provision that doesn't allow us to build the residential of the hotel, so we'd like to remove that condition. So, our request for the council to consider is simply removing the hotel condition in the Overlook Ridge ordinance. Other than that, we were in front of you before asking for some sort of reduction in parking. We no longer are requesting that for the residential. We will be building this with a two-to-one parking requirement as it currently is zoned. This property is zoned for, under the MEPA approvals, for three hundred and seventy units, and we're proposing three-ten. It's proposed for up to eight stories. We're proposing five. So, we have no request for any variances, actually on either lot, but for the removal of the hotel condition. So, that is as simple as I can make it. We got fairly beat up last time for other topics, which we no longer requesting. If I can make a couple other comments, and then glad to answer questions and et cetera. A few other things that came up last time, I want to just come back to the council to report. It's been now a number of months. The hotel, the shuttle system has been in place now for months and will stay in place. It was removed at COVID. It was a mistake. We have, and I'm also happy to report, all three property owners that own buildings now in Overlook Ridge are participating in the shuttle support. So, everybody is now engaged. We had to make one of the owners understand that it was a MEPA condition, and they can't make a decision to remove it. Both Veris and the other property owner were already supporting it, but it's back fully operating at the same three stops going to Malden Center and Haymarket as before. I think, oh, one other topic that's come up since we appeared in front of you before, which we're really pleased with, in two thousand and twenty-three, we applied for four million dollars for Masworks to begin the first phase of the installation. Actually, that is earmarked to pay for the intersection at Salem Street and the light and the flipping of the road from behind the firehouse to in front of the firehouse, which creates the retail site that we're talking about tonight. So, we now have funding through Malden's application, which was a joint decision of Revere and Malden, from Malden to lead it, and Masworks gave us the first four million dollars. So, I want to report that as well. And now, glad to take questions and comments.
Thank you very much, sir. This is a public hearing. We have to go to any other proponents? Any other proponents? People in favor of this? Name an address for the record, sir.
Thomas Skrylski, two eighty-one Broadway. So, another rerun from a two thousand and twenty-three episode of Revere City Council, but I'll keep it brief as a result. The abbreviated changes that have been presented here from what was reviewed last fall, I think they're reasonable. We approve of what's been presented, both because I think there's a reduced need for hotel at this location. I understand the importance of bringing in hotel tax revenue to the city, and will strongly advocate for those areas in which it seems appropriate. This isn't one of those areas. And in addition to that, as Marshall had mentioned, there's a real need for neighborhood amenities, restaurants, retail. We need to see more of that in North Revere, and we've heard that from the residents. And then, thirdly, the removal of the parking reduction request also responded to some of the things we heard in the public hearing about the need for more parking. So, they heard us loud and clear, and I think they removed that as a result. And I know it's a very narrowly focused amendment that we're looking at tonight, but just to take a step back to talk about everything else and why this project is great and why I'm excited to see through this last phase of Overlook's development. Number one, not only is the housing being proposed, which, again, is allowed by right, but it's being proposed at a level that's actually less dense than what they could build per their MEPA conditions. They have voluntarily agreed to include fifteen percent affordable housing at this project at or below eighty percent of the area median income. That is the most aggressive support for affordability that we've seen from a private-sector partner that's not having the project subsidized through state or federal monies, and I think that should be applauded. And then, through the land reclamation agreement, for every unit of housing created in this project, we receive a payment of two thousand dollars, which in this project amounts to six hundred thousand dollars, which can go towards community mitigation efforts in the ward. And then, lastly, the off-site mitigation work that he had mentioned, certainly the Salem Street intersection's really critical. The next step would be adding safer on-and-off ramps to Route One. And then, more locally, in conversations with Counselor Janino, which we appreciate you bringing it up, there was an issue, and it has continued to be an issue with the joint fire station between Revere and Malden with the sewer line there, and Veris is committed to working with the city to identify the issue and to rectify the issue as the work gets underway to move the road. As the road gets shifted, when we're under the hood, so to speak, we're going to take action to resolve that problem once and for all, which, I'm not an engineer, but among other things, it has to do with how the waste line is pitched and a few other tweaks that need to be made, and they've committed to helping to support finding a solution there. And then, finally, you know, this was approved with the Joint Planning Task Force between Revere and Malden back earlier in two thousand and twenty-three, so both communities support this. I certainly support this, and I encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none. Oh, sir, come on up. Good evening. Name an address for the record, please.
Philip D. Olivera, fifty-eight Breeden's Lane, VMS. I've been around before this project, before the shovel even hit the ground. I used to work through that quarry when it was a quarry. I'm glad it's finally coming to an end. It seems like everybody's getting what they want because I've been at every meeting many years. Seems good. Everybody's happy. No hotel, well, so be it. Everything else seems to fall into place. City, everybody's happy with... Say it again. All right. And that's all. I'm in favor of it. It's coming down to it. There's nothing left. There's only one section, two sections left. I wouldn't mind having a restaurant or a coffee shop in there because I live at the top behind it, and I'll be glad when it's done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to close that side of the hearing. Open it for opponents. Anybody not in favor of the project? Seeing and hearing none. We'll open the floor to the city councilors. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, thank you for coming up this evening and presenting. I agree that that is not a good location for a hotel. I'm even more excited about the affordable housing piece, and that's a huge step and a big step on your part. I do have a kind of a strange request, though. In the back parking lot of your site, I'm sure you see every spring, there's a giant American flag that goes up in the rocks behind this site. That was put up by a few people in the neighborhood that live around there. It's a bendable pole that they went up and fixed, and they asked me to ask you if you'd be willing to put an American flagpole up there.
Of course, I would say yes. I'm turning place exactly in my mind where it is.
It's behind the rows, if you look up at the rock... If you look up at the rocks, there's a huge flag that flies up there every year.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Hard to say no to the American flag.
I agree.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Marshall, I want to thank you for several things. You know, I was one of the ones that when I heard the hotel is going to be eliminated, I was like freaking out. But that goes back a long time ago. And we've put in probably six hotels since then. And we certainly don't need a hotel up there. But I want to thank you for putting together that shuttle situation that it seems like a small thing, but to the people that lived up there, that was a very big deal. And you brokered it, and you convinced the people that they were breaking the rules. And that takes some doing when you can stop doing something that's costing you money and someone's telling you, no, you got to do this, and you got it done. And I think your changes, and you came back, and you're not looking for a parking variance. You're building a smaller building. You're putting retail up there that's desperately needed. And we made you wait to do it. But I think I'm glad we did because you come back with a better proposal. But you're to be commended. If we had more private developers like you and even for my friends that love affordable housing, you've set a new mark because you got 15% in there. It's all good, and I wish you the best. And hopefully, we're not going to have any trouble in the zoning committee getting this.
Hope not.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Giannino.
First of all, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for addressing the problem with the Shore Atlanta Firehouse.
Good.
As I talked to Marshall a few times about the proposal up there and the business coming in, hotel gone. I think the city's changed a lot in the last 20 years since they first proposed a hotel up there. And the demand for it in that area has changed. And I think there's a big demand for retail on that location. You go by there 5:00 in the afternoon, there's cars all over the place up there. Just keep most of them in-house maybe. And I think it's a good improvement we're making.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Garina Swaye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to commend you on the 15% of affordable housing. And I'd like to know what kind of retail you're putting in there.
My hope, and my hope is to get a small green grocer, a small market, not a 7-Eleven. I like, I'm hopeful that there's local people that can open up a true green grocer. We call it a bodega in New York. But a small restaurant, maybe a dry cleaner, not a plant, but a pickup, drop-off. Neighborhood services, things that allow people that live there to walk down there and get these things done. There'll be 4,000 people living in here. So we need neighborhood service.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Yarmio.
Thank you so much for joining us today. Can you tell me a little bit about the shuttle utilization right now? How many of your residences?
The shuttle has been reinstated. It makes, it has the same three pickups it had before. So it picks up at the Emery. It picks up at the Park, which is in the middle of the Chase, and it picks up at Corey Stone. And it does two in the morning and two in the evening. I forget the exact times, but there are times that pretty much where the demand was situated. And it goes both times, Malden Center and Haymarket, and then back Malden Center and Haymarket.
Now, you said you're reducing, or someone mentioned about a reduction in density limits. So what was allowed through the permitting process for this?
The allow, I think it's 376, but don't quote me. It's in the 370s. But I think it's 376.
And what are you reducing it to?
We're building 310. And then 15% of that 310 will be set aside for affordable.
Can you tell me, walk me through the thought process for that reduction?
Say it one more time.
The thought process for that reduction.
Well, we are private developers, so we do build or are allowed to build generally as a rule. I mean, when we laid out the property, we weren't comfortable how it fit more density. That 310 was about where we were comfortable fitting, keeping the garage at the right level. When we build this, if you've been out to overlook, you'll see that what we've been historically done is try to wrap garages with housing so you don't see garage structures. And that'll be the same design here.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry. So you have a, so you have a two-to-one parking ratio. You intend on keeping that. What are your costs? Do you have a cost of construction for your parking?
No. We haven't, and we haven't drawn. When you looked at that master plan, you saw building layouts on both sites. That's for, that's the building layout that did the scale for us. Those are not just thrown on a piece of paper. We actually were measuring footages and scale, and that's what fits there. But we have not drawn these buildings yet.
Mr. President, this is going to committee, right? Okay. So would you kindly bring those costs for parking by committee or rough estimates? Are you in that stage yet?
Not for this building. If you, if you don't include site work and you just look at the parking structure itself, those parking structures are considerably more expensive than they were in the past. That structure will probably be $22,000 a space before you do the site work that's necessary with the rock, et cetera, to prepare the site, having nothing to do with site work, utilities, anything else, just garage structure.
For the rest of your property, what is the cost of the building, like unit building compared to the parking? Like the ratio in your cost estimate?
I'm sorry, what was your question again?
Your cost ratio for parking. For, so unit building, parking structure. What's your cost ratio?
I can't give you that number.
Councillor, I'm sorry. We're getting off topic here. This is to remove the word hotel from the. So I don't want to really harp on parking at this moment in time. It's also going to go to zoning. I know where you're getting at, so.
No, Mr. President, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask my questions because this is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, but.
And I'm going to reclaim my time on this. Thank you.
I don't have that answer.
Understandable. Okay. And my understanding is, so the average Revere wage for one person is $73,000. And you're aware that 80% of AMI for this region is $83,000?
I'm not done. Other people in my office have done these numbers. I've not done these numbers.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Councillor.
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hess.
Thank you, Mr. President. Marshall, thanks so much for being up here. 15% affordable housing sounds like a great start. Thank you for getting the shuttle service back up and running. And did you say 4,000?
Yeah.
How many, there's about 4,000 people up there?
I think when we finish building Overlook Ridge, it'll be around 4,000 people.
That's great. Maybe we could send the food trucks.
But the restaurateur we put in place probably won't like it.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Permission to, oh, councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for being here tonight. I just have one quick question. Do you have an approximation on the square footage of the commercial retail space?
Our calculations are taking it to about 10,000 feet. And that's mostly, we have to park it. So with the land we have left, it'll be about 10,000 square feet, plus or minus with code to code parking.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. Just really quickly. So you said something about a grocery store. I just want to let you know we have a Stop &amp; Shop .7 miles from there. We have a market basket and a price rate about a mile and a half from there at Northgate. So I would like to see more neighborhood things. You mentioned a dry cleaner, a barber shop, or something like a Maurice Tavern style thing going there. You know, so just more neighborhood things. I don't think we need the big grocery store.
There wouldn't be a big grocery store. Talking about 2, 3,000. It'll be small. I mean, it's 10,000 feet total. So that's not a grocery store. That's, that's, yeah. A bodega is the best example. That's what we're used, that's what I'm used to.
Bodega, you got it. All right, so this is going to be referred to zoning on April 8.
Thank you, everybody.
Calendar item number eight. Hearing called as ordered on a request of the city planner to amend the zoning map of the city of Revere relative to the Conservation District and RA1 zoning districts in North Revere.
This is a public hearing. We'll open it to proponents. Good evening. Name and address.
Good evening. Tom Skroski, 281 Broadway. I'll be brief here. Frank Strangie, the city planner, will be present at the zoning subcommittee meeting to discuss this in more detail. But to keep it short, the newly created Conservation District has various lands throughout the city that are either preserved for conservation purposes or have no developable value. And most of them are in contiguous conservation areas. And what this proposed change does is two things. Number one, it takes one parcel out of the Conservation District, which is, if you look at it on a map, really on an island, compared to all the other parcels that are actually zoned for residential use. And that is parcel 34-467B-29A. And this proposed change would remove it from CD to the RA1 district. And then the second proposed change, actually, I should just back up a second. So that's on Morris Street, just to sort of locate it for everybody here, a little bit northwest of Leinhurst. And then the second change actually proposes adding a series of parcels that are also city-owned to the Conservation District. And that's a series of parcels that are on, right off of Franklin Street, between 53 and 73 Franklin. And the parcel names are there for you. I'm not going to read each of them, but we've got five, six parcels in total that would be associated with contiguous conservation land to the north of it. So again, in effect, taking one property out that's really on an island by itself and putting several properties within it that are part of a contiguous Conservation District. Again, Frank will be here at the zoning subcommittee to talk in more detail, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have. Answer them best I can.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents, people in favor? Sir? No? All right, seeing and hearing none. Opponents, anyone not in favor? Close that side of the hearing. Any city councillors? All right, this will be referred to zoning on April 8.
Calendar item number nine. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon to relocate a jointly owned pole, number 679, approximately 10 feet north to accommodate new construction at 53 Dedham Street.
This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents? Proponents? Unless you're opposed to it, sir. Name and address for the record.
Jose Luis Cazurdia, 170 Medford Street, Malden. This is for Devon Street.
You want to tell us a little bit about it?
By any chance, do you have the work request number for that?
I kind of feel like you should have that.
Yeah, because I have Dedham Street and Winthrop Ave. I don't have. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so in this case, National Grid is requesting to relocate an existing pole on Dedham Street, approximately 10 feet northbound to accommodate a proposed driveway at 53 Dedham Street. This is a customer-driven project. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none. Are there any opponents, people not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. City councillors, councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I drove by, this is in my ward. I drove by this location today. It's simply they're building a new house, and they want to move the pole a few feet so they can accommodate a driveway. Full support of it.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 10. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to construct a line of underground electric conduits from Beechmont Winthrop Avenue parking lot to pole number 2589 on Winthrop Avenue.
This is a public hearing. We'll open it to proponents. Sir, name and address for the record.
Jose Luis Cazurdia, 170 Medford Street, Malden. In this case, National Grid is requesting to install approximately 15 feet of underground conduit from an existing pole over to the private property to provide a permanent underground service. This is also a customer-driven project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none. Are there any opponents, people not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. City councillors, councillor McKenna.
Thank you. This is in my ward, and I'm totally fine with it. I talked to Jose today about it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11. Hearing called as ordered Calendar item number eleven, hearing called as ordered on the application of Eight Revere Street LLC, Eight Revere Street, requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to raise the existing non-conforming structure and construct a nine-unit townhouse development at Eight Revere Street.
This is a public hearing. We'll open it to proponents. Good evening, everyone. Please state your name and address for the record.
Members of the council, for the record, Rick Salvo of Engineering Alliance, Officer, one ninety-four Central Street in Saguas. Come before you on behalf of Eight Revere Street LLC, Johnny Lightbody and Charlie Lightbody, members of the LLC, are here this evening. This is obviously located at Eight Revere Street, map twenty-four block four four-two dash four four-three, lot two B. It's comprised of about seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. I think everyone's familiar with the location. It's occupied by the Sons of Italy, which is an existing, non-conforming use and dimensionally non-conforming, as you can see the building, building here, right up against the property line. The majority of this site's paved. There's a small landscaped area in front, right on Revere Street, totally about eight hundred square feet. The proposal is to raise that building and construct nine townhouses in the configuration shown. There'll be four of them on the Eastley side of the property, five of them on the Wesley side of the property with a single curb cut. As you can see with the green space around this building, we're going to increase the green space around this building from about seven hundred and eighty-five square feet to a little over seven thousand square feet. So it's about ten times the amount of green space will be located on the lot. Each one of these units will be parking compliant. They'll each contain the required two parking spaces. Take a look at what the rendering might look like. So if we talk a little bit about the conformity with the zoning, once the site is built, we're looking for a little bit of relief on the front yard setback, looking for about twelve point six feet, where twenty feet is required. So this allows us to keep the maximum amount of green space in the back, meet the rear yard setback, which is up against the residential properties to the back. And also, we're meeting the side yard setbacks. Again, we're increasing the open space from five percent existing today to almost forty percent in the built condition. We meet the lot coverage requirement. We meet the stories. I mean, height will be underneath the height requirement, but as you can see in this picture, this will be three-story, a three-story structure where only a two and a half is allowed by right. We think that this would create a great transition from the commercial area to a multi-family area, onto the single-family area. Unfortunately, the, you know, the Sons of Italy, while it served the city so well for so long, it's kind of met the end of its useful life, and this can provide a much-needed housing option. While these units are proposed to be market-rate units, you know, the reason why we want the townhouse concept is they can build something that's a little bit more affordable to folks trying to get into the housing market. These won't be rentals, these will be condominiums, they'll be homeownership. And while it won't really add to the S H I, but it will provide an affordable option for folks trying to get into the housing market in the city of Revere. So that's essentially the proposal. So I guess I turn it back to the council for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, sir. To continue with the public hearing, are there any other proponents? Anyone else in favor of the project? Seeing and hearing none. Any opponents, people opposed? Seeing and hearing none. City councilors, and I would ask, this is in my ward, and I would ask if I could go first this time and speak from the chair. Thank you. We are not going to get another project like this. We are not going to get another project like this. Instead of putting thirty units, we're getting nine two-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-parking-spot townhouses. This is exactly, exactly what we need in this community. And not only that, we're taking a bar out of an area, near a school, not to say anything bad about the bar, sir. I've been there. But it's, it's just, it's, I guess, just, this is exactly what we want. I am, this is my ward, I am one thousand percent on board with this. I'm very excited about this. I've spoken to the residents in the area, especially the residents on Rosetti Street. They, it is a resounding yes from those people. They are thrilled that it's not apartments, and I think most people will be. And I just can't say enough about it. So thank you all for the leeway and going first. Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I couldn't agree more. I got to be honest, I thought the Sons of Italy one day was going to be multiple apartments. And in talking to the developers and the owners of the property, they were adamant not to do that to the neighborhood. They talked to their neighbors, they found out what the neighbors wanted. When they heard what the neighbors wanted, that's what they put. And I commend them for that. So I hope we, I hope this is a start to more projects like this in the city, and I commend you gentlemen for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Yarmio.
Hi, thank you. So, yeah, can you tell me a little bit about the dimensions of the project and as it relates to the bedroom sizes and the...
So it's the, the entire unit is about seventeen hundred square feet. We don't have the units fully designed yet, what the actual sizes of the bedrooms are. You know, I'm not really sure of that at this point in the game. But there'll be seventeen hundred square foot units, one garage space, one space outside, two bedroom units.
Is there any restriction on the size of the units? As, like bedroom size restrictions?
Not that I'm aware of, not unless the council were to impose one.
And the variances are for setback?
Front yard setback, number of stories.
Number of stories? What is by right on the number of stories here?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay. And you're doing one parking spot per unit?
Two per unit.
Two parking spots per unit?
Parking compliant.
Okay. I really appreciate you bringing this. I spoke to Mr. Lightbody the other day, and, you know, I will stress to you today that we are in desperate need of family housing in this, in this, in our city. We've been building a lot of apartments, but we're pricing our own people out. You just heard me talking with the gentleman who presented before, who's offering eighty percent of AMI, fifteen percent of the units. But most of the people in the city of Revere, the average amount of people in the city of Revere, don't make eighty-three thousand dollars a year. And so we are pricing our own folks out. My neighbors, your neighbors, your grandchildren, my kids, if we don't start to building different solutions. So I would encourage you to, you know, think a little bigger in the bedroom size here. It's a smaller project, so we're not talking about burdening schools or additional city services. I think it would be a really good addition to the neighborhood in particular. I would also really encourage, and the reason why I'm speaking now is because I don't sit on the zoning subcommittee, so, is to really think about some solutions for, for some of the residency and the flooding that happens on Rosetti Street. I, you know, I've walked down that street multiple times and would appreciate you all thinking strategically about how to alleviate that, whether some, you know, I hear you're putting a bunch of green space. I really like that. I think that's a good way to maintain, to maintain some of the sustainability down there and avoid flooding with additional green space. But if there's other ways to ensure that in your property as you're building, I would really, really, really encourage that. And overall, you know, a select in the permanent process, but I think that, would really appreciate if you could consider some of those additional things that I've mentioned. And, you know, if, if you want it, and you want to come down to one point five parking spots for, for, to reduce the cost of your building and to potentially add a unit in there that, that was even at eighty percent of AMI, I would welcome it. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great project. It's a breath of fresh air from what we've been seeing. I think it will go beautifully in the neighborhood, and I'm in full support of it, and I commend the owners for bringing a project of this magnitude to this location. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Janino.
I think this is a great project, a great idea, great location for it, and a lot better than it could be there. I just want to thank the developers and people who are forward to it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that the idea of going from seven hundred to seven thousand feet of green space is amazing. That area back there has always been so cold, there's, it just has a cold feeling to it. There's barriers in the back, it's just a lot of cement, so I feel like this is refreshing for that, that neighborhood. And like many councilors have said, this is a great alternative to the type of project that we had all feared and heard may go in there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Garino-Sowaya.
I'm in full support of this project as well. It's so much better than putting more apartments in there, and when it's, when it's owner-occupied, we get tax revenue, so this is perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great project. I will not accept less parking, though. I know the neighbors there will kill me if I do. So those spots need to stay there. But the green space is really going to help the flooding in the back. This is a well-designed project. I know a lot of the people, I live in the neighborhood, and I know a lot of the people were very afraid of what was going to happen there. And this is a great solution, and it's going to, it's going to be a nice project. And like I said, I live there, so I know what it's like. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I generally, I'm not in favor of special permits and all this, but this project, I would love to see more projects like this. This is exactly the type of development that I can get behind a hundred percent. It's aesthetically pleasing, you've got the parking, you're increasing green space, and it's seventeen thousand square feet of land, and we're, we're putting, you know, nine units on it, which we've seen, I've seen some things in my short time here that, you know, this is just, I commend you for, for the thoughtfulness of, of the development that you're going to put up, and I think it's going to benefit the community. And I think it would also allow for a path of homeownership for first-time home buyers. I think, you know, this does allow for that, rather than just apartments that give somebody some, you know, nine families a path to homeownership, which is what we want to see. So, thank you, and good luck with the project. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. This is going to be referred to zoning on April eighth. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number twelve, hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by the McClellan Highway Development Company, one Beacon Street, Boston, Mass., requesting permission from the Revere City Council to construct certain telecommunications conduits and associated manholes on Washburn Ave. in accordance with the plan on file.
This is a public hearing. We'll take up proponents first. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Abigail Middleton again, from, on behalf of McClellan Highway Development. This application is to put, we're basically consolidating a request to put in the conduits for five telecommunications providers that will be doing future services to the Suffolk Downs project in general, as well as the vertical buildings, each individual vertical building. The benefit of, in working with the city staff, the benefit of doing this as sort of, as one permit and doing all the work at one time, is A, it's less disruptive, and B, and we're also able to maintain the services that exist to the current, excuse me, residents on Washburn Avenue. So this, we will be doing the work on behalf of the various components with one single contractor, so it'll be as least disruptive as possible. So anyway, happy to answer any questions you might have on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none. Closing that side of the hearing. Opponents, anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Councilors, councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my ward. I was just, how many conduits are you going to put up there and how many manholes on Washburn Ave? I mean, these people would be, been inundated with all kinds of stuff. I just hate to see this.
So the benefit, the reason that we're trying to do this in a consolidated manner is to minimize the disruption. These, sort of, the idea is to do sort of one and done and get out of there.
Okay.
So we're talking about doing, I don't know if you can refer to the graphic, but the yellow is the...
I don't have it.
I can show it to you.
Thank you.
So it's both telecom and electric conduits, so some of it's running up some of the existing utility poles on Washburn. There's plenty of two, I believe, manholes on the corner of Washburn and Winthrop Avenue. And then it's the various feeds that go to both six nineteen, also the pole, the conduit that's going up the pole is providing the future service when we, we can turn over the service to the existing residences of Washburn Ave. And then some are going into the Suffolk Downs site. So the idea is, as I said, to do it one and done, get out of the way, and then hopefully we won't have to mess with it again. And then we'll be doing the streetscape improvements on top of that, so that the area will be repaved.
So you're going to go curb to curb?
On, on the streetscape? Yes.
Okay.
It might have to be sequenced in terms of the work. There's a little bit of a delay on the, with the utilities, but eventually, yes, we'll be curb to curb.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one more question, ma'am. At, at any point in time, should the residents of Washburn Street expect a down power?
As far as I understand the sequencing with the various providers, there are five providers that are going in ours, in, in the various conduits. So depending who they have, theoretically, there'll be at one point where they get, it cuts off one, the old service and gets brought to the new service. So it's, I mean, I can't guarantee, but it's not, it's intended to be a...
Very sure.
Exactly.
And, yeah, will, will there be notice on Washburn Street to the residents?
Absolutely. Yeah. And we're trying to, again, consolidate all, all the undergrounding work, all the streetscape improvements, to be as minimally disruptive as possible, because, you know, they're putting up with a lot.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Motion, calendar item number twenty-two, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor request the chief of police to provide speeding enforcement through additional patrols on Cary Avenue.
Speaks for itself. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-three, motion presented by councillor Garino-Sowaya that the mayor be requested to reinstitute the Christmas parade throughout the city of Revere. Parade route will be determined at a later date, and all businesses would be encouraged to participate.
Councillor Garino-Sowaya.
I would like to add councillor Janino to this, as he has done this parade in many, many years. Is that okay with you? I'm very excited to bring this back. I've already spoken to the mayor about it, and we have Mike Zachariah here, who is willing to lead the way, along with a couple of other companies. I have G J's willing to help. They do all those parades in other cities, and I'm really excited to bring this to the city and to all the kids and, and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Councillor McKenna.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a suggestion. I know that Priscilla Nickerson, we have a, the Santa Walk, maybe we could call this and combine it. I don't know if her family would want to do that, but maybe we could call it the Priscilla Nickerson Christmas Parade.
Councillor Garino-Sowaya.
That was the mayor's suggestion as well. He wanted to include her.
All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-four, motion presented by councillor Garino-Sowaya that the mayor request the chief of police to increase patrols on Thorne Dyke and Hastings Streets. Motorists use these streets as a shortcut and speed through the neighborhood.
Councillor Garino-Sowaya.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor? All opposed?
Calendar item number twenty-five, motion presented by councillor McKenna that the mayor be requested to notify R C N Astound and Comcast to remove its wires completely when cutting lines instead of wrapping excess wires around the telephone poles. This practice of poor and inferior workmanship creates an eyesore throughout all neighborhoods in Revere.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I don't know, it must be R C N's, I don't know, I, all I know is it's wire after wire, pole after pole, and it seems like it's now, so they must be given a discount or something. So, but what happens is the ward councillor or the councillor at large sees the pole, and they have to call Comcast. Comcast comes out, but they won't, they won't remove the wire, and they leave it there. And then it will be, it could be there for years unless this body calls and says, look, pole number sixty-seven has wire on it, and then they come out and they do it. So I just want, I, you know, I think we, as a council, we just had National Grid up, and it took us years to get to the point of where we are now with the double poles, and I think we should address this, because it's in all our wards. So, and it's an eyesore, and I bet it's not, if R C N is in Marblehead or they're, in a suburban area, I bet you don't see that. I bet you don't see that. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree totally with councillor McKenna. I've seen numerous wires dangling, almost, I mean, sometimes, some nights I walk my dog on Sullivan Street, and there are two wires that are probably maybe nine and a half feet. I mean, I can't grab them nowadays, but years ago, I probably could have. And just the other day, they were removed across from the Lighthouse Nursing Home. There was a big white, I don't know if it was a cable connection or something, but there are instances of this all over the city where these wires dangle, and some of them fall to the ground, some are wrapped around other wires, other poles. At some point, it's a safety issue, you don't know what the wires are, and I agree with councillor McKenna, it seems like we're on the right track here and with our conversation with National Grid tonight, but hopefully we can work together and figure out a way to, to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Yarmio.
I'm just going to say, if National Grid doesn't do it, I'm going to ask my ward councillor to do it, because I got a wire on the pole outside my house that's hitting my window.
Address, sir. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-six, motion presented by councillor McKenna that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Christine Salazar, Conrado Cabrera, and Vanessa Cabrera for locating an autistic girl and her dog who are missing from Beechmont for approximately four hours. Further, that Mayor Keefe and Chief Callahan be invited to take part in this presentation.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll save my comments for the night of the awards ceremony, but this is a very deserving commendation for these people. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-seven, motion presented by councillors McKenna and Argenzio that the mayor request the traffic commission to assess the activation of the fifteen-minute grace period button on parking meters in the Broadway Central Business District. The activation of this feature will provide customers with free parking for fifteen minutes to run quick irons without being penalized.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm going to give councillor Argenzio time to speak about this, too. I was totally unaware about this. We went to a, a meeting, and someone brought it up at the meeting, that on meters, there's a green button, and it says, okay, and there's a checkmark, and it gives you fifteen minute, a grace period for fifteen minutes. So if you're doing takeout, or you're doing, you're getting your dry cleaning or whatever, it allows you not to park, double-park, and then you can just go to the meter, press the button, which I guess they haven't been activated since they went into Broadway. And I'm only asking for the, the restaurant district from Companions all the way to Maurice. So that's what I'm asking for. And I have talked to a number of small business owners, and they said this would help tremendously. this would help tremendously, because as soon as they park and they don't, see, I know, for, for instance, I hadn't had, I couldn't find a quarter, you know, and I had to go into someone, an establishment, to get quarters, change a dollar, whatever. But this gives, um, people a grace period, so they don't get ticketed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Argenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, councillor McKenna and I attended a meeting, and, and this was brought forth by the, um, business owners. The meters are programmable, so you can do pretty much whatever you want. And, uh, I thought it was a great idea. You pull up to a meter, you press a button, you got fifteen minutes. You can use the ATM, you can get takeout, you can go to a convenience store, and we, we know the, uh, parking enforcement officers are doing their job. They're aggressive, which is, which is great, a lot of revenue from the city. But it wa-, I think it would just give the business district a little, a, a little shot in the arm. And I, I know myself, I went in to use an ATM, and I ended up, I came out and had a ticket. Um, I paid it, by the way. And, uh, and, uh, so, uh, I, I think it's a great idea, and we can, uh, ask, uh, the director of parking, uh, you know, to come in and, and speak to us about it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, from what I heard, the, the buttons aren't yet activated. Um, and you'd have to put sensors in, I believe? That's, I, I believe that's what-
I have no idea. I know that-
Yeah, I believe that they're programmable.
Yeah.
So, if someone comes by and they program it, you can do fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, you can do whatever you want. So, yeah, they're, they're a very active meter, you can do what you want.
They were deactivated when they put the, um, meters in, because they wanted the revenue. But we ca-, I, I think you can turn them back on.
The only downfall with that is they, um, the parking meters help play, pay for three of the parking employees. Um, and then you'd kind of be relying on the honor system. Someone's there for fourteen minutes, they back up, then back into the spot, hit the button. I don't know if there's any way to enforce that, or, um, maybe that's something we can talk to the parking director about and see how they will go about enforcing that. But I'd hate to see, see the city lose that amount of revenue. Right now, they take in over two hundred thousand on the meters alone, and that goes to paying city employees, and, um, that's a tough one. Obviously, you want to see a boost in the local business and the business district, but you'd be relying on the honor system, and you'd be losing a, a lot of revenue. Thank you.
Permission to speak from the chair?
[inaudible]
Thank you. Um, so I like this idea, uh, but I agree with, with both sides. I actually agree a lot with what councillor Haas just said. Uh, we utilize this to fund the, the parking department positions, uh, three of them, I believe, right now. But I'm also thinking about the people that do DoorDash and Uber Eats. Um, I'm thinking about the people who run in real quick just to pick something up. Maybe we could lower it to five minutes? I mean, is five minutes feasible? All right, seven and a half?
[laughing]
That's it. Um, it seems like this might need a little bit more conversation.
Yeah.
Do we want to put it into a subcommittee, and if so, which one?
Yeah. Can we put in EcoDev, Mr. President?
We have, uh, and, a motion to put it into economic development was made first. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number twenty-eight, motion presented by councillor Zambudo, that the mayor request the policy writer and analyst and fire prevention to draft an ordinance or special legislation establishing regulations for the licensure of the indoor storage of electric vehicles. There have been numerous reports of electric car batteries igniting and causing fires which cannot be extinguished.
Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'm a little upset, because I put this in a long time ago. Uh, I don't want to, I don't want to be sitting up here when there's a catastrophe and say, "We could have stopped it a few years ago." There are catastrophes happening across the country and across the world. The, it's a problem. Now, we, we do the, uh, chapter one forty, oh, is it one forty? The gas, one forty-eight, the gasoline licenses. We should have something in place for electric, uh, storage of electric vehicles. Um, again, I don't want to be sitting up here when, God forbid, somebody's killed because of this, and, and we, we could have done something about it. So, uh, I, I think we need to push the mayor to push the policy director to get this done, because they've looked at it for quite a while, and there's, there's plenty of ways to, uh, see where it's being done in California and where it's being done in other places. And it's, it's an easy, easy thing to draft it, and, uh, it's better to have something in place than the, trying to, trying to find the perfect, uh, ordinance. Let's get something done now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, um, I actually agree with councillor Zambudo tonight. uh, if, if, if you've seen, um, if you've seen the news about a month back, there was actually a, an electric car fire on the highway, and it took eleven fire trucks. No humans were injured, but it took eleven fire trucks from multiple cities to put out one car, and it burned for like three and a half, four hours. So, I, I can only imagine if that was ignited inside a building. Um, so, I'm in favor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Yarmio?
Mr. President, um, I'm just going to ask, does this get moved to climate committee? Just because I think we should talk to experts, and we should talk to the fire department as to how best avoid these fires. Also, get some experts. Uh, so, if we could, I'd like to send this to committee and further imagine so that we can ask the mayor to contact, um, a scientist to come tell us how we can best deal with these fires, if they occur, how often they occur, uh, and someone from the fire department. Uh, so I think maybe we could put this in, in this subcommittee and kind of further delve into the best way to do it.
Mr. President, if I might?
Uh, councillor, did you, was there a motion you wanted to put on the floor now? Um, would it be okay to, to take comments, or do you want to vote on it right this second?
That's a good question.
We have two, two additional councillors that want to speak.
Yeah, we have some, we have some-
And the maker of the motion. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Garino-Sowaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with councillor Zambudo as well, and the reason why I do is because the fire department cannot put out this fire with regular water. You need something special. You need some, some type of, a special, um, retardant that actually goes on the, the fire itself. And then what happens is it reignites, and they can't stop it at times. So, you'll see them pull out the fire, and then all over again, it would start in a huge fury. And it's, it's, it's really dangerous, and that's why I chose not to buy one of them, to be honest with you. I'm afraid of them. So, thank you, um, councillor Zambudo for putting this in.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, not that I don't want this to go to public safety, it could, but the bottom line here is, the motion calls for the policy director and the fire department, the fire, uh, officer, to get together, draft an ordinance. That would be appropriate for then to go to public safety, for us to tweak it in any way we want. But to get the ball rolling, get the thing out here, and then we can, if we don't like some language in it, we can tweak it in committee. But, uh, that's my suggestion. I'm, no offense to my colleague, but that's, that's what I would like to see.
So, have the policy writer write something first, uh, with the fire department, then it would come to us. Then we could put it into subcommittee at that point. I don't know how you feel about-
Yeah, that's fine. I'd just like to point out, yes, that, that's fine, if we could put in the climate subcommittee. Of course, uh, ensuring that we have EV infrastructure throughout the city is going to be a big, important piece to the energy transition that we need to make as a coastal city. I'd also like to point out that the National Transportation Safety Board and the Bureau of Transportation Statistics, uh, have done the math on this, and for every hundred thousand gas-powered, so your regular gas-powered, powered electric vehicle, fifteen hundred light up on fire, as opposed to twenty-five for every one hundred thousand E, electric vehicles. So, while I understand the concern, uh, and I don't want to, I want to, want to sit here and say this is a non-problem, the, the Transportation Safety Board and the Bureau of Transportation Statistics is pretty clear that, uh, the risks are low, and so, yeah, so let's talk to the policy dr-, writers, let's have, uh, the fire department, and then, um, and then let's, let's see, love to see a motion, uh, come to our climate committee, because as I mentioned, this is an important piece of the puzzle to tackling the clim-, climate crisis.
So, councillor, uh, you're motioning to put the, this motion into Climate Sustainability and Workforce Committee?
That's right.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Let's take a roll call, and you can vote as you will.
Yeah, well, so what are, I think we're, so, what was the plan, Mr. President? Was the plan not to go to-
I'm sorry, guys. Listen, there's a motion on the floor. We have to address the motion. He wants a roll call.
No, Mr. President, hold on, sorry.
Okay.
I just want some clarity.
Sure.
Do, uh, so the motion is to send it to the mayor and policy writer for, for them to draft an ordinance?
Correct. And then it would come back to us, and at that point, we could look at the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I'll withdraw the, my motion.
Okay, motion withdrawn. On the original motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number twenty-nine, motion presented by councillor Silvestri, that the mayor request HYM to maintain upkeep of the dog parks located on its property. There are no dog bags available for waste removal, nor are the parks kempt.
Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I got several phone calls about this over the last about week or so. Spoke to Tom O'Brien, and, uh, as a good neighbor is, the very next day, I received pictures of the park cleaned and the bags full. So, I want to say thank you to Tom O'Brien, HYM, doing what they are asked to do. Thank you.
Place, place on file? Councillor, place on file?
Calendar item number thirty, motion presented by councillor Silvestri, that the mayor request the director of HHC and SUDI to appear before the city council to provide information on Nalox boxes. Further, that the city council be provided with an update on monies from the opioid settlement.
Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, just to clarify, Nalox boxes are being, um, proposed by our substance abuse department to be hung throughout the city. Um, so, a light pole, Broadway, on a pole somewhere, um, where you'd be able to, um, get an arc in, in case of emergency. Um, I also like them to come up and, and discuss. Um, just a couple weeks ago, the city was, uh, received another substantial amount of money, and I'd like to break down of where that money is going, how it's being spent, and what we plan on doing with it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Um, this will be a presentation scheduled on April eighth. And all in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number thirty-one, motion presented by councillor Silvestri, that the city council hold a preliminary discussion on potential zoning amendments related to the implementation and expansion of medical and adult-use marijuana in the city of Riviere.
Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I know we've been discussing this for a few years now. Um, I think it's time to, to get this in motion. Um, we have a lot of support in the council, and, um, I think it's, it's revenue that in the upcoming things that are hitting the city, the new high school and, and many other things, this is revenue that we can no longer look past. Um, we, we need it. It's out there, and, uh, we have support now. And, um, I'd like this to go into Economic Development to start the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors wishing to speak? This will be sent to Economic Development. There's no further business. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.